Are you ready?
Yeah.
Call the Water Pollution Control Authority and Regular Town Council meeting to order for Tuesday, October 2nd, 2018 at 7:02 PM. Start first with salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Judy.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Here.
Councilor Candelora. Councilor Diamond.
Here.
Councilor Fawnan.
Here.
Councilor Miller. Councilor Rose. Councilor Bigliano.
Here.
And Councilor Zampano.
Here.
Motion to approve the events of September 18th, 2018, special meeting of Water Pollution Control Authority and Town Council.
So moved, second.
Any corrections? Roll call.
Mayor Judy.
I'm staying.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnan.
Yes.
Councilor Bigliano.
Yes.
Councilor Zampano.
Yes.
Okay, next we'll move into Water Pollution Control Authority agenda. First items, correspondence, citizens, correspondence and citizen statements underwater pollution control authority. Say none or movement to unfinished business, there's nothing listed. New business, nothing listed. Citizen's statements and petitions underwater pollution control authority. Moving to the Regular Town Council meeting, reports of committees, boards and commissions, Economic Development Commission.
Yes, they met last night. There's also a report in your packet from Roger Sawway about the level of activity that he's undertaken. And a lot of focus has been on the apprenticeship program that he's working on in terms of helping the state build its pipeline for skilled workers and the advanced manufacturing pipeline, so to speak. He's been having a lot of conversations with our local manufacturers and trying to build a program here. So that's ongoing and I think it should bear some fruit in the years to come. I believe he's working also with the Department of Education and the high school and with Scott Shoemaker, Superintendent about building programs there as well to successfully get students interested in these high skilled entry level work positions. So we're going to continue to push that program and monitor and hope that we'll have some success down the road.
Next is Park and Recreation Commission.
I was unable to attend the meeting. They held it early in September and I was not able to attend.
Police Commission meeting.
Police, next meeting is October 9th, next week.
Fire Commission.
Oh, Fire Commission, next meeting is Thursday, is coming Thursday.
Board of Education and Town Council Communications Subcommittee.
No meeting.
Town Planning Goals Subcommittee.
The Town Planning Goals Subcommittee met yesterday. We are ready to present a draft of a five-year plan to the town council. So on behalf of the committee, I'd like to ask to have that on the, actually, we could put it on the agenda under future budget planning initiative. We'd have something, what I'd like to do is get a cover letter and you would have it on your laptop, but we'd also want to have paper copy because it's on legal sized paper and I think it's easier for folks to read and understand. But I think it's in good shape. We just need some information from the Board of Ed and we're pretty well finished. And I have to thank Anthony for all the typing he's done to get it put together.
Next is Public Safety Communications Committee.
No meeting.
Planning and Zoning Commission. That's not here, right?
Yep.
East Shore Health District Department. No report. All right, Town Manager's report, update on Route 80 Bridge Project.
Yes, you have the email correspondence from Kurt and the State Department of Transportation regarding the delay in the Route 80 Bridge Project. What originally was November to December. I don't know if Kurt has anything additional to report, but it delayed due to construction and I guess the 48-inch water main mainly.
Yeah, pretty much what I said in my memorandum, they're experiencing delays due to construction activity related to 48-inch water main. It slowed the process down. And to be honest with you, it's doubtful, in my opinion, that they're going to be finished before the snow flies this year. So that's something they'll have to, they're addressing, they're trying to move it along if they possibly can to try to get everything open. It depends on the type of year we have, but they experienced delays and my guess at this point is they're not going to be done before it snow flies. So the biggest issue that I certainly will bring up is access to a budding properties when the snow flies. Because there's an impact, when they have that bypass, people have to get into the properties a little bit differently. So we have to make sure that's brought up, discussed before we get to that situation. So everybody's aware of it and the state knows what their obligations are as relates to those properties.
So they need finishing pavement, finished coated pavement before they move.
Well, that's the concern I have.
Before they move that temporary bridge.
Oh yeah, they have to have the other bridge open before they can do anything on a temporary bridge. Again, they're going to try to make up time, but the last rainstorm didn't help, you know, they were working in water. So that eats up a few days over there when they're doing that. And I'll have better information, there's a meeting next week and I'll report at the next meeting and keep you posted regarding the status of that. But it certainly looks like it's highly unlikely it'll be open for the winter. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Community Events and Presentations, press release on nationwide test of emergency alerting system.
Yeah, there's a notification there in your packet about that system and the test has been postponed until October 3rd.
Okay.
Right. So I just read in here and it says that they're going to speak over the sirens that go off at 6 o'clock?
That is correct. Back in 92 and 96, when Farm River flooded pretty extensively at Milpon Tavern Bridge, everything else over there, we convinced the federal government that we needed a way to notify the citizens of a problem and they were able to fund us to buy the sirens for the three firehouses. Since that time, quite honestly, we've never tried it out to see what the range of the vocal aspects. Everybody hears the siren at night, but we're going to try to put a phrase over to say, okay, you know, I don't know what the phrase is yet, it's up to Jim, but how far can you actually hear it and allegedly understand what they're saying so that if we had to spend something over, you know, on emergency basis, how far could the word get out? So 6 o'clock, you're going to hear the siren go off and there'll be a voice. We want people to realize it's not like, you know, end of the world kind of thing. It's a voice that's a test of the system and it's never been tested before. So it's going to be shocking to many people. So we put it in here, it's in Tukka Times, hopefully people watching tonight will be, you know, spread the word. Jim Buck's had it on the emergency management page, I believe, as well. So it's to test the system to see how far it actually will reach on a vocal basis.
Okay, well then it also says here that they asked that residents go to the Emergency Management Facebook page.
Correct.
So it's the North Bramford Emergency Management Facebook page?
Correct, yes.
Okay, because it's not really clear in here as to.
Or you can email, I believe it says as well, you can mail it to.
Is there a link to that, Anthony, or they just type in North Bramford Emergency Management?
I think just type in North Bramford Emergency Management, EMD, it brings you. A lot of people are already on that page already, quite honestly, it works well to get information out. But if they want to call the office instead, they can call, I'm sure, the manager's office and just, hi, I'm on Glenwood Road, I hear him saying, you know, ice cream is, I don't know, whatever they're going to say, but you know. So just to get an idea, we can map it out on a little map to see what the range truly is.
When was this going to happen, Anthony?
6 o'clock tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night?
Yep, yep, 6 o'clock you hear the siren go off first and after that winds down, you'll hear a voice coming over the sirens, over the speakers.
Okay.
Signs at Memorial Field.
Yeah, just to let the council know, invited tomorrow night at 5:30 and a joint event with the Recreation Commission to dedicate, I guess, and unveil the sign for the fields and parks at Memorial. So that'll be at 5:30 and a nice little photo op, I think it'll look great. I think we're getting a lot of good feedback on the signs. I don't know if anyone's seen the Community Events signs there in Northford at the triangle have already gone up. So a lot of calls, a lot of comments that they appreciate how good the signs look.
Thank you. Next item, citizen's statements, petitions and correspondence. Moving on, resignations and appointments, there's nothing listed. Next is unfinished business, discussion in action, future budget planning initiative.
No items.
Next is approval of proposed ordinance 2018-2, Chapter 40 entitled Fire Department.
I think we'll have to come back to that one after the public hearing.
Yeah, the public, the public hearing was continued from last meeting.
Next is review and discuss of, discussion of contract with H.D. Seeger regarding insurance services.
Yeah, on that one, I would suggest the council table that, going to meet and hold a meeting internally to gather more information with H.D. Seeger and bring that back for the 16th.
So you want to table it to October 16th?
Yeah.
Next is discussion in action on 824 referral regarding open space at 55 Tommy's Path.
That's procedurally, we have to send that out and Carrie had also taken the time to put together the list beyond looking at Tommy's Path, 55 Tommy's Path, for you to take a look at, not necessarily take action tonight, but any future meetings and looking to review that list and any other properties you want information or more detail on to discuss possible disposition or disposing of those.
How much open space is on Tommy's Path that we're talking?
It was like.
Small pieces.
But it's adjacent to an existing piece.
I think in total, seven acres possibly?
I think it's about five acres, more or less, a town piece and then the plug piece, a boulder.
Wooded piece, open?
It's a wooded piece and a plug plane piece, that connects the bolts walk over there for the plugs. And then the boulder property that's proposed, used to let the, on Tommy's Path, about a half, a two-fourths acre. It's one of those things that the town ended up with, there's really no value, it's more open space. And the issue was trying to convey it to, whether it should be conveyed to Land Trust because there's, really, presents more of a maintenance issue with the town. It's better suited to be to the Land Trust.
So, just because there's no motion or anything here, so would P&amp;Z put it on their agenda for this week and then it comes back to the council?
Well, the question that I had, because it varies from municipality to municipality, how the process is done. Something, the 824 referral can be done administratively through the town manager or it can be done through first, because it's really this body referring it for an 824 review by the zoning commission.
I think that's what we've done in the past, haven't we? There is a motion.
So if the practice in this town is to come out of this body by way of an action, then the proper action would be to move to refer pursuant to 824.
Yeah, we have a suggested motion, so somebody wants to make that?
I'd like to make a motion that the North Bramford Town Council hereby refers the property located at 55 Tommy's Path to the Planning and Zoning Commission as part of the 824 referral process.
I'll second. Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnan.
Yes.
Councilor Bigliano.
Yes.
And Councilor Zampano.
Yes.
And next is review of energy management opportunities with Mark Demming.
I'd like to begin, I'm the one that asked to have this put on the agenda. I'm not purporting to be any kind of an expert about energy management, but after having listened to some presentations from some solar companies and having done a little research to learn more about energy management, I spoke again with Mark Demming and I do think that he has some things to offer us. I think that if we want to improve efficiency in this town in terms of our utilities and our building operations, I think there are a lot of things that we could do and I would like to recommend that we look at those things before budget time because I think there are opportunities to save money. I'll give you an example, I got a phone call a couple of weeks ago from a friend of mine who lives in town and said, Marie, why are the lights on all the time in the parking lot at MBIS at 3:00 in the afternoon? I think that, I think there's a need, based on talking to some people, to look at the operations and the management of energy throughout the town, both the town and the school system. I think that before even we consider looking at the high school and the renovation, that there should be some kind of an energy audit and I think that Mark has a lot of opportunity here to offer us. So I have a list of questions and I'm going to give everybody a copy if you want to use any of them, but I think before you talk about solar, you need to talk about energy management in general. So I'll pass these along.
As Joe and I know, you go up Route 17, the lights at Norfolk Park are on, the festival.
Mark, thank you.
Good evening.
So I'll start with the question.
Okay.
If we were going to do something, what are the first steps? I know you explained it, you have some questions here that we could use, but what are some of the first steps a town should take? And what you did, I read what you did in Trumbull and I was very impressed, so how would you do that?
First, you have to know where you stand today. So you need to do, as you said, an energy audit, have a three-year average of what your costs are. What are your costs, what's your use? You have to understand how your buildings are being operated, what the hours of operations are, and move forward from there.
So what are some of the basic steps that you would do?
Well, again, it's, the first step is the review of your utility costs. So you're going to go back three years and see what your utility costs have been on average. And then you tour the buildings, you identify inefficient equipment, you identify prolonged operation of the building, unnecessary operation of the building. Maybe temperatures are set too low, too high. Maybe there's hot spots, cold spots that are contributing to additional energy use. It could be as simple as weather stripping in your schools, it could be single pane windows that are still in your buildings, it could be, it could be a lot of things, but you need to identify all of those things. You can't take this as a piecemeal. You have to look at each building as a comprehensive package. Because each energy conservation measure that you do is going to have a different payback to it. So you may need to replace a boiler that's 40 years old and inefficient, but you may be able to do that less costly if you tie that to, say, building management system, to LED lighting, to whatever measures that building needs. So again, when I saw you were already looking at solar, but you're saying that MBIS is an inefficient building, well, why aren't you addressing the inefficiency of MBIS before you purchase solar? A kilowatt hour that you don't use is a lot less expensive than purchasing solar electric at a reduced rate. So get your buildings efficient, then talk about solar.
So would you like to have a check, like say you were going to go into a building, you have like a checklist?
Yes. So basically, you review the building, you review the equipment, like I said, you review the hours of operation, you understand how the building's used, what the needs are in that building and base your audit on that. And then you set a target price, what can we save in this building? And then you budget your ECM project, Energy Conservation Measure projects, based on what you can save. So say you can save $15,000 a year, then I would say you could invest $150,000 into that, into that building, because it's going to be a cost neutral investment. And then you take your maintenance savings on the side because you're installing new equipment. You're installing possibly LED bulbs that you're not going to change for the next 10 years. You're going to have a warranty on new equipment that you're putting in. So you have to find your break even point. Some buildings you'll find that you're going to have a delta between what you save and what it cost you. Some buildings may maybe break even. But that's, you have to understand where your buildings are at today and what you could save before you plan a project.
So is solar something you put it towards the end, you decide after you?
The very last thing.
So, you're Mark, right?
Yes.
So you're going to look around and tell us what we need? Is that how it works?
Yeah, well, what my proposal was is that I would look at your town buildings, your Board of Ed buildings, do a review and basically give you a list of ECMs that would get you to where you need to be. It may be recommendations that you put VFDs on some of your motors and pumps. It might be weather stripping, it might be new fully condensing boilers. It might be changing the way you air condition the schools or buildings if you're using window units still. It could be a myriad of ECMs that we would come up with to help you save money.
And what does something like this cost?
My proposal was for $6,000 for the review, $6,000 for the town review, $6,000 for the Board of Ed review.
Our buildings have never had any type of energy reviews besides, you know, the free stuff that the power company gave you, which was come in and change your lights, you know. And we found out, you know, unfortunately, we found out we changed a lot of lights in company too and the cost savings wasn't there, you know, because those lights aren't on at night, so.
Right, and that's why I said you need to understand the hours of operation, how is the building used? You know, you can't invest $150,000 in a lighting project when you have, say, 20 hours of occupied time in that building a week. It's just not going to pay for itself. That's why you have to understand how are you using it, how much are you paying? What's the average cost of operating that building from a utility standpoint? And then base your project on, okay, here's where we are, here's where we could be, and what's the delta? So then, if you finance that work over 10 years, you're even in 10 years. But the life cycle of that equipment is going to be more than 10 years.
So take lights, for instance. So basically making sure we're lighting when we're supposed to and not lighting when we're not. But then the study goes away, all the improvements go away, but with still the same employees are operating the lights on and off. So what happens then?
So you have a couple, you have a couple of options. You hold your employees accountable for operating the buildings the way they're supposed to or you pay a company to come back and do measurement and verification that the ECMs that were installed are still being followed. I would venture to say if you've got a building that, within the last 10 years that's been built and it's your most expensive building to operate per square foot, it's not being operated properly.
We have a few of those.
If you were to do something like that, like say for example, the town buildings, how long would that take? To do an audit of each of the buildings?
I was, I was planning on approximately a week to two weeks per site.
For the whole, for all the town buildings?
Yes.
You're going to create a benchmark, basically.
Exactly, exactly.
And a plan.
So that you know that you're making progress. I mean, until you have, set that benchmark, you don't know that you're making any progress. And that's how we, that's how we would measure and verify that we are getting the efficiencies that were proposed.
So that'd be in the form of a plan that we could follow so when we open up the building to the town hall, we know exactly, you know, what we're going to address, when we're going to address it.
Right, I mean, you could go so far as have a measurement and verification checklist that is filled out monthly by the person who's responsible for each of these buildings and let them verify that, you know, this item is scheduled, that, you know, as pointed out earlier, that when daylight savings comes around, we're adjusting our lighting schedule. Basically, from what I heard, it's pretty simple, you set your lights at 3:00, they're always on when they need to be. They're just on for too long.
If you were to do something like this, would you come back, like say in a year, and look at what's been accomplished and if we're on the right track?
Again, if the town was looking for measurement and verification later, yes, absolutely.
But shouldn't we hold people accountable?
Yes, if you're asking me.
I mean, people are responsible for a specific area that's your, I don't know, maybe the town would not have P&Ls, but that's your, that's your department, you know, that's your cost center.
Right. But you may not have people necessarily in place that have the knowledge to get the efficiencies from these buildings. So again, once, once you've given them the roadmap to get there, yes, then definitely you should hold these people responsible.
Anybody want to use any of my questions?
Mark, the process, after you've done your audit, what's the next step? What's the process to implementation?
So basically what this would do, this audit would do is give you, A, your benchmark on your utility use and then it would give you a list of ECMs for each of your buildings. So Energy Conservation Methods. We could, we could go as far as pricing those out for you, getting quotes for you, obviously, at additional cost above and beyond, but this would at least tell you, you know, where you stand. This building has a boiler that's maybe at 40% efficiency and we could get it to 98% today. You know, there's a lot of different things and each building has to be treated as an individual entity and you need to have, you may have, you know, different prescriptive measures for each of those buildings and no two may be the same. And that's why you need to take the time, walk through the building, understand how the building's operated, the hours of operation. You know, if you're using a building heavily at night, don't put solar on it, it's not going to help you. Make it more efficient. Again, and, you know, one of the things you have to understand is you're going to pay for whatever that solar system you put in produces, whether he uses it or not. Whether you use that electricity or not, you're going to pay for it. So don't produce more than you're going to use and don't produce more when it's going to be producing than you can use. Because you can't bank that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to put that on.
Pardon?
You're going to put that on agenda for?
For next meeting.
All right, next, we're going to move into the public hearing. Seven thirty-one, we have a continuation of public hearing. Proposed ordinance twenty-eight dash tw- uh, dash two, two thousand eighteen dash two, chapter forty, title Fire Department.
You called the last meeting, there were two items that were identified that needed to be cleared. And section D and E of that first article, attempt to clarify that. The first question was, what permits does this pertain to? And basically, I think Attorney Moreno, this basically came out of the Orange Town Code. Basically tells you what type of permits that the fire marshal is involved with that will be charged this additional fee. And paragraph E talks about how the funds, the general fund revenue, the same manner as building permits or planning and zoning permits. So with those two clarifications and additions, I think this is the final version. Ready to rock if there's any questions?
Do you want to take any action on that?
Well, so the, the public hearing's open, so I guess the public still has to...
Any further questions?
Comments from the public, I guess.
Comments. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at seven thirty-four. Close the public hearing at seven thirty-four. I guess we'll move into, go back to unfinished business, discussion in action, update on the Nuremberg for Police Department renovation project. This is been kicking around. And I asked the town manager to do a little history of the, of the research on the police department, specifically when it was built and how much it cost. In the fall of nineteen ninety-four, the sitting town council approved twelve thousand dollars for the land purchase, and then seventy-three thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars for the building. In nineteen ninety-three, the police department underwent an expansion cost of three hundred and six thousand. We have a building that served this well up for almost forty-five years for a total cost of under four hundred thousand dollars. This summer, we received a presentation from the architect firm Silver and Petricelli, as requested by the police commission. They discussed expanding this existing building or replacing it with a new building. New building comes with a cost of approximately six million dollars and a life expectancy of twenty-five plus years. Over the years, the building has started to deteriorate. There have been current, there currently are five furnaces heating the building, septic system problems, leaky roof, and it's not handicap access, to name a few of the issues that need to be addressed. I think we need to stop throwing good money into the building that is barely hanging on. We have a police, we have police officers that deserve a safe and effective workplace as well as a building that meets the expectations of our citizens. I feel that this project should be moved into the architectural drawing phase and maybe bid documents for a projected cost for a new building. That's where I sit. I don't know if anybody else has any suggestions.
I think at some point, we need to make a decision. We've been talking about it for a long time.
No, that's, that's...
But I guess my question might be, do people feel that they need some time to review this report because they just really got it today?
I do.
But is it possible that people could review it and maybe we could vote on some decision, have some decision the next meeting?
We'll put it out.
I mean, I think people need time, I mean, I, I know it didn't come out until this afternoon.
Right. I, I haven't had a chance to, to, to look at it, and I just think it's fair, and we're also missing three members tonight. So I would like to see it on the next agenda, to give us, to give us time.
As an, as an action item, I would like to see this as an action item.
Yep, all right, it'll be on the next agenda.
And I, also, I think it would be good or helpful if we, I know that the town, the police commission has been discussing it. Maybe we should, you know, I know it's been in their minutes, but maybe something could be submitted to the town council from the police commission with their recommendation. I think it's important to hear what they have to say.
Yeah, they, I think that recommendation's already, I think they've already voted on that. We can get the minutes or have the chair...
I don't know if everybody's seen that, though. I know they voted and they've talked about it, but I think it would be nice to get something from them in writing so that everybody can see that.
Yeah, and I think they, I think they could comment on that, and I think the minutes reflect that from the last, the last meeting as well. And I just, before we go on, I just want to point out that, that when we set this up and, and did the RFP, we had that language in there that the winning, or the, the architectural firm could be selected, or the selected firm authorized to provide preliminary, final design, contract plans and documents to be utilized in the bidding and construction for the selected improvement. So we gave ourselves that option that, pending this report and review of this report, that the council could then extend to the same firm without having to rebid the next step, which was what I call construction ready documents, so that you, if you wanted to spend for the next phase, you could use the same firm to get you to that level if you, if you feel you are ready to do that. Just a point in, in terms of the process of how we put that bid together, that RFP.
How will it be financed?
Well, that, that's a, certainly, I think, a good question, and it depends on, on what level. If you decide on a renovation project, either way, I think, I think you're looking at a bonding project in several, whether it's one point five to two million on a renovation or six million on a new, on a new building. I think, in my opinion, I think you're looking at, at a, at a bond issuance.
Can, is there a way to put numbers together to see how it impacts the town either way? Just so that, to make an educated decision?
Well, yeah, well, that's the, the purpose of the last, the, the analysis in terms of Anthony put together the chart that showed the, the impact. We can have the, the numbers behind it, yeah, certainly, but it can be absorbed because the, there's a steady decline, I, I call it a decline, until two thousand twenty-six, and then there's a sharp drop off after twenty-six. And we had, I think, touched upon it a little bit about how to do, how do we do a police department and potentially a high school? And as Anthony pointed out, there's a way to do it, but you just have to push it out till you get to two thousand twenty-six when additional debt service gets declined sharply. So I think if you want us to work up some, some numbers, we can do that, again.
Yeah, I think it, I think it would be, I think it's important to do, just to, to lay it right out and, and present it. Present it exactly how it's going to work, you know, the numbers, how they're going to flow, and describe it.
Yeah, and we, we can do that. I, I think you've got to step back, and, and, and the threshold question is, are, is the council voting to renovate at a, at a one point five or two million? Where are you, you know?
But wouldn't the, don't, don't we want the price tag to come before the... Right, so we want to establish how, if, if we did X, we, this is how it would look. If we did Y, this is how it would look. I mean, I think that's important.
Sure.
To make an educated decision.
Yeah, we can line them both up at, at, using the one and a half to two million renovation number and a six...
One and a half, two million, that wasn't even realistic in the ballpark.
I thought it was like three or something.
No, it's what we started with. We say, we, we, we gave the architects and said, listen, we'd like to, we'd like to hit a target of one and a half to two million, what can we get?
I wasn't even addressing the issues that were in it.
In my opinion, no, I, I...
I mean, we got to look at what the...
It's a Band-Aid, I think.
What the police commission looked at, which was, you know, the addition to the building, you know, and then moving out of it for, you know, eight months to a year, finding a place to put everything for that length of period of time, or a new building. I mean...
But, but part of the issue with the new building is, I believe, if I remember correctly, is that they were, they designed the building for a police force of somewhere around thirty-three to thirty-five, I thought. I know it was in the thirties. And I just, I mean, we're a police force of twenty-three right now. So I think the thirty-three to thirty-five is an unrealistic number. So what would those costs be if we brought it down to a more realistic number, which could be, you know, we're at twenty-three right now. I would say if we went to twenty-six or twenty-eight as a max, and even that might be a little high. And we were, we were at twenty-two officers for a very, very long time. We added one for this year. So I, I don't see that number going to the thirty-five number in, you know, the next twenty-five, thirty years. I don't see it going to that number. So what, how big would it be in how, with that six point nine number, what would it be reduced to? Because I'm sure we wouldn't need all that space for that.
Oh, yeah, Commissioner's here.
Councilor Chris, I can answer most of those questions. We reduced it from thirty-three to twenty-nine people for officers. And that reduced the smallest renovation from three point eight to three point five million. The original new building was going to be six point two, we got it back down to five point eight. So we already reduced all the phases by about four hundred grand by taking the count of thirty-three officers to twenty-nine. But we're at twenty-three with an officer getting out, we're going to have twenty-four on staff. So gives us a fifteen percent growth to get to the twenty-nine. That being said, the other cost was, it was double the square footage, and it's not one point two, it was one point two for temporary facilities. It was one point two million just to bring in a temporary station so we can use while the renovations were going on, on top of the renovations.
Correct.
So that's where the one point two million came in. So at three point five million in your book, if you look at it, comes out to a thousand dollars a square foot. When the new building, it's less than four hundred dollars a square foot. The cost doesn't make sense. And then one point two million for temporary storage, and we own them. They're not rented, we own them. Then we got to get rid of it and disassemble it. So the renovation was not even close. Plus, we also could lose communications, dispatch. The new building gives us the new infrastructure, new dispatch, new facilities, and no possible scenarios of anything failing. So with that option, we went through it. And to get a budget put together to, to, to find out if, how much the bond's going to be, we definitely like the architects to go to the next level and get a design so we can bring it to GCs to get prices. Because they might be really off or on the money. So the architects got to go into the design stage so we can actually get concept drawings to bid and have contractors tell us this is our raw costs. These are just preliminary numbers. So if it was, you know, my opinion, I would go to the drawings, get the drawings done, get the bids done, and then find out where your, like Tommy asked for, where your bids were going to be going. You don't know, these are just concept numbers. I hope that helps.
What did you say that number would be now with a new figure for...
It was originally six point two for the new building, down to five point eight, reduced to twenty-nine officers. But that's thirteen thousand six hundred and ninety square feet of new building versus renovating eight thousand square feet. And then that's phase two. If you go to phase one, it's only thirty-six hundred square feet for three point five million. It's almost a thousand dollars a square foot. And you got to bring in a temporary shelter that the town owns and has to take apart and get rid of it later. So there's a lot of, for one point two million, it doesn't make sense to put a temporary facility that could fit.
Thank you. And so Anthony, you've got your assignment. Put it on the next agenda.
What, 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 the unknown is, if the council wants to proceed, as the commissioner just indicated, to the next phase, the unknown is what that fee is for Silver Petricelli to get those documents. And I think that has to be negotiated with the council to, or through me, to, to them if, if that's indeed what the council wants to do in taking that next step. So there would be funds expended, or we'd have to, I don't know if it's already been, we'd have to appropriate those funds to, to do that, to get to the next level. Wouldn't have to rebid it, but we'd have to negotiate with them because I don't know what that, what that fee is. And if that's something you want for the next meeting, I need some guidance on that.
I think, I think it should be, we have to have, no matter what, what we're going to do, we have to have some type of figure as to how much it's going to cost to get to that next stage.
If you want real numbers, yeah.
We have to have a ballpark, huh?
If you want real, real, or solid numbers, rather than these, these estimated numbers, yeah. I don't know if you want the, to see the analysis again first on, on bond and what, what the impact is, or do you want it simultaneously?
I think we need both. I think we need both. I think we need to know what the cost is to get to the next level. Can't, I don't think we can vote on it without knowing that, right? And then, but at the same time, just take the projected number in the meantime and just walk, walk everyone through it slowly with the numbers and how it's going to work, what's going to cost the town, you know? I think that's important. It's a lot of money. I'm not saying not to do it, I'm just saying, but we need to understand.
I'm pretty troubled by all of this. We started off with a discussion where we were going to rehab the facility, and I understand that there are practical impediments to a rehab, being particularly a relocation of the police department during a rehab. But the concept that we gave to the designers of the meeting at the police station was, I don't even think it was two million dollars, I think we were talking in the range of a million and a half, which I think was palatable to everybody who was in the room, including the police commissioner at that time. With that in mind, we've now quadrupled that number. And I understand these are resonants, these are non-hard numbers. They require some more definitive drawings that we can base prices on. But the one cloud we've got hanging over all of this is something we've got to deal with on a townwide basis going forward. Right now, we don't know what the next government of this state is going to be. We have one candidate saying he's going to eliminate the income tax. What impact is that going to have on municipalities? We have another candidate saying we're going to deal with this, and he paints a rather flowery picture without giving an awful lot of specifics as to where he's going to come up with the funds to do the things the state has to do, not even addressing the fact that we've got a four point six billion dollar projected deficit statewide. That deficit is going to be visited on every town. So when we're looking at setting our budget, and we're looking at setting, selling bonds, we've got to keep in mind that a large part of our budget is subsidized by, historically, by the state of Connecticut. Our educational cost sharing has been as much as seven, eight million dollars a year. Is that money going to be there? And are we prepared, if it is not, to assume an obligation of about seven million dollars for your new police facility? Plus, the need to look at a high school facility, which clearly is in probably even more deplorable condition than the police department. So when I hear these numbers and the ease with which we can bond, it sounds great. But that money's got to be paid back, and it's paid back from town taxes. So every taxpayer that's struggling now, we're talking about visiting on them as much as another forty or fifty million dollars worth of debt service? I think we need to know where the state is going before we bite off these kind of bills. And I'm extremely reluctant to expend money for design documents and going out to bid on a facility that I seriously question our ability to afford. And I think in six to eight months, when we know what the state budget is, remember after that governor is elected and sworn in in January, he's got to present a budget to the state legislature, his proposed budget, within, I think, two to three months. We're going to know by late winter, early spring, just what we're looking at for the state of Connecticut. of Connecticut. And I think to jump the gun and do something along the lines of what we're talking about is potentially money wasted. And I think we're buying something that we have no means to really deal with on a fiscally responsible basis. So, I, I'm very reluctant to consider these proposals. I'm very reluctant to expend funds to even study these proposals. That's just my personal take.
I, I agree with, with Joe, and I think the whole process should be slowed down. I think we're moving too fast here. We don't even have a full-time police chief. And here we are, building a new police station. I think it should be slowed down, too. We're talking about renovating the high school, we're talking about a police department, there was word, there was things mentioned about a town hall that I heard, and I'm not quite sure what that was. But, I think we should just slow this down a little bit. It's an awful lot of money, so it's a big burden to put on the taxpayers.
Can't get any slower, we've been talking about it for years, but.
And ironically, the police department has been functioning for years.
Right.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying don't do it, I'm just saying, slow it down a little bit.
Moving on, new business discussion and action.
We have that one item in the old business that we didn't vote on. The fire, the ordinance.
Twelve B.
Twelve B. Now that we have the public hearing.
Yep. Twelve B appro, approval of proposed ordinance twenty eighteen dash two, chapter forty, entitled Fire Department.
I would make the motion that we approve the proposed ordinance twenty-eight, twenty eighteen dash two, chapter forty, entitled Fire Department.
Second.
Discussion.
There's no, there's no motion in here.
Okay.
Marie just made that motion up, based on, based on the agenda item.
Roll call.
Mayor Judy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Foreman?
Yes.
Counselor DeGalego?
Yes.
And Counselor Zantana?
Yes.
All right, next item is quarterly report from Stephanie Malkin regarding Daniel Cosgrove Animal Shelter.
I don't have anything significant to report. I have a copy for each of you, our, of our annual report that was written in July. The only thing I would add is that we continue to fundraise as much and as often as possible to meet the needs of our animals.
Short and sweet.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yes, that page is forty-two.
All right, next item is discussion on administrator salaries.
That's executive session.
Next is reappointment of Potato and Corn Festival Coordinator.
Yeah, I, I'd also suggest for this item, that we carry this over to the meeting on the sixteenth. There's some developments there that I have to speak with the director, and additional information I need to gather before we can make any, take any action on that.
All right, so we'll move that to the sixteenth. Next is review of proposed road ordinance.
Good evening. This item actually came up with some concerns of the police department regarding wanting to make sure that they had provisions in, in the ordinance for traffic control. A lot of it had to do with overhead utilities to make sure that they had the right to require police officers there and, and to administer that process. At the same time, I, I've been working on trying to revise the road ordinance, the road standards, to update it, because it, they're, they're quite out of date, and it hasn't been done a long time. So, I took the opportunity, when I came up, talked to town attorney, town manager, and basically, what you see before you is proposed revisions to the road ordinance. In red, you'll see revisions as, as proposed by town attorney regarding the police issue. The other revisions are basically, I, I tried to pull out a lot of the standards and create a separate North Ramford Road Standards Document regarding the, the details of construction, methodology, design procedures, trying to get guidelines, a handbook for contractors, developers, and the like, to define what's required for the road. Something sort of Fran and I have been talking about for a lot of years, and so, I put that together. And there are revisions to the ordinance itself. Again, one of the big things is being, taking out the, the detailed standards into that separate document. Sort of reorganization and, and cleaning up some of the items that are, that are not of date. It's pretty voluminous in, in terms of the changes to both documents. But, but, but that's the gist of it. I mean, there's a lot of changes. I tried not to make huge changes to the road ordinance itself, the, the street sidewalk ordinance, move things around, try to make them better fit, add it where appropriate, and again, like I said, the biggest thing is moving the detailed standards into a, the road standards document. So, that's what you see before you, again, if you have any questions, but that's the overall concept that, that was put together. Next, the town attorney has looked at it. You know, he's given, he gave you some comments, and those are incorporated within it. Really, the next thing is, if it looks like the, the council would wanna move forward, then it's a matter of scheduling a public hearing regarding the ordinance itself. I don't think the road standards document, you know, that's, that's not a, that's a standalone document that's referred to in the road ordinance, but, like I said, it, it's a comprehensive package. And scheduling it's whatever fits your, your schedule is, is a long-term change, and there's, there's quite a bit involved. I referred to the police, public works, planning, and the like, and I've gotten their comments and incorporated any of those in the documents.
So, we'll review this and?
Yeah, and we, we can bring it back. I love it if everybody read it in detail, give me any comments, but like I said, there's, there's quite a bit there, or, or had any questions. I, I think we cleaned up a lot of things in terms of detail and updating standards. But, a lot of these things really should be reviewed periodically and, you know, technology.
Kurt, I don't, I don't see an awful lot of changes in here. The changes are, are your red?
No, that's, that's just a police issue. The, the changes are.
Highlighted in black.
The bold.
Bold, black.
The bold is all new, and the brackets, within brackets are deletions. Pretty much, I, I put it in, in, in terms of what would be required for a public hearing, talking to Lisa Valenti, trying to make sure it fit the required format for any ordinance change. But, yeah, there, there's a lot of changes. Again, a lot of what you see in bold, maybe the numbers changed or moved around, so I had to delete it one spot and then move it to another spot. I, I, I tried not to make as wholesale changes in, in, in the concept of the, of the road ordinance, but I tried to clean it up, add a few sections to it, and delete where appropriate.
Does italicize mean anything?
The italic, the ones in, in brackets, the italic, that's a deletion.
Just one sentence or phrase.
Again, one of my thoughts was, maybe, if you like, again, the format is what's required for, according to Lisa Valenti, to have a public hearing and make the changes. I could just sort of give you a final version so you can just read through the proposal without seeing what's proposed to be moved and changed. More of a readable document, because it, it is very cumbersome to see what, what's being removed, what's being proposed, and then try to read it as a whole in its entirety.
So, when you're looking at this document, you can't see the revision?
Well, you can see the re, yes, it shows the revisions. If it's in brackets, it's proposed to be removed. If it's bold, it's proposed.
No, no, what I'm saying is, like, is this revision one, revision two, revision three? We don't list them like that?
No, this, this would be proposed revision from the current ordinance. Everything here is from the current status. I mean, if you like, I can sort of give you a proposed final version that's more readable. I, you know, just looking at it, it, it is hard to sort of comprehend the final document.
So, so when you're looking at this document, not this document, but the, the live document, the one that's in use?
Yep.
For lack of better words, when you look at it, can you see that, what the revision is, like, when it was revised, the latest revision?
The only, um.
Probably at the top of the page.
Like, if you revise a document today, then tomorrow you should see today, some, some revision. That's what I'm asking.
It really hasn't been changed, I don't think, since probably the, the late seventies, early eighties. What, it got changed when it got reformatted, when, when the whole, the charter and the ordinance were reformatted. But, in, in terms of substance, there, it's, it's long, it hasn't been done since I've been here, and probably many years before that.
Just, just to answer, if you were to look at the operative ordinance, whether it be online or, or, at the bottom of the table of contents, there's a history section which goes through all the changes that have been made over time.
Okay. That's, that's kind of what I was asking.
Yeah, so it should be located there, or at least on the document that I printed out.
All right, so.
Just to follow, but, would you be interested in sort of a final, what it would look like document?
I'd like, I'd like to see a final, then I could.
I mean, then, then you could sort of read what it would, you could see what it would look like if it was approved, with the changes. Okay, I can, I can do that, get that forward.
Would that change the, I mean, how would we know if they, if they wanna take action at the next meeting?
That's in addition to.
In addition to that?
In addition to, you, you still need this, I talked to Lisa about it.
You need that format.
The format that she needs to see, or we need to do for proposing a revision to the ordinance.
And for a public hearing.
But, just, information, readability, like I said, it, it's a difficult document to read because of a lot of changes taking place. You could see what the proposed final version would look like. Trying to make sense of it. Okay, I can do that.
So, we, we didn't take any sidewalks out of developments, did we?
We didn't take them out of there, it's, it's a P and Z, whether they put them in or not.
So, we'll bring that back for next meeting and then set the, potentially set the?
Changes, and I'll, we'll get it back.
Thank you. Next item is review of nine forty-four Toto, Toto Road remediation. I, I put this back on the agenda because it's, I heard that there's, it's up for sale, and it's up for sale at a significant price over what they were asking for it at one time. And just so our budding property owner that had an action taken against the property doesn't get caught in the middle of it again. I just wanted to make sure we are covering our bases.
There is, the, the town does have a judgment against this, the, the property, and that judgment is a, recorded on the land records, so it's a matter of, of public record. So, any potential purchaser would be put on notice by virtue of the fact that the judgment is part of the chain of title. And that, and, so, so that, I believe, protects not only the town, but the general public because of that notice. There's also ongoing discussions that staff is having with the property owner in order to try to effectuate the terms of the judgment. And it's my understanding that, I believe, next month, there's a financing issue with respect to the proposed work, and we should hear, I think Carrie had said, within the next four weeks.
Something like that.
Something like that, whether or not the financing is in place, place to get the work done. Effectively, what has to be done is there are some ponds on site that were filled in and need to be restored, and some other grading work that needs to be done. So, but we're in the process of trying to ensure that the ju, the terms of the judgment are carried.
But anybody that goes, does a title search on that property is gonna find the, the judgment.
I did verify that a copy of the judgment has been recorded on the land records.
Next is appropriation transfers for two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen.
So, moved. Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Judy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Foreman?
Yes.
Counselor DeGalego?
Yes.
Counselor Zantana?
Yes.
Next item, citizen statements and petitions.
Excuse me, lift barter twelve fifty-one Milton Avenue. I'd like to pass out this old handout before I speak.
Thank you.
I'm the person affected most in our whole neighborhood is. I'm just the, the mouthpiece, the big mouth for the neighbors. As you can see on the first page, that's what my yard looks like on a bad spring. So, I'm gonna call the first page the problem. Then if you turn to the court order, that is the fix. It's in yellow. And I guess what I wanna do is, and if you go to page three, that is the next problem, the sale of the house. And I think the price has even gone up since I did, this, this property went up for sale on June twenty-seventh for two thirty-two, three hundred, or however she did it, you know? And my question is, at what point, because just like I told you last year, and, and I'm gonna call it for what I saw it, the other town attorney got caught sleeping on this. We had a bank that owned the property. I knew that, I brought it to the attention of the town, and, and in reference to Attorney Marino, he was not involved, and he's been a big help since he's become a boss. But, the inaction of that attorney caused this house to be sold out from under the town's ability to get this corrected. New owner was informed, new owner said they would do what they could. Now, they're running short of funds. So, at what point does page two become effective to solve this problem? If this isn't solved within a couple of months, and we have another wet spring, and we're supposed to have a wet winter, is there some point where we can actually have the town go in and do the remediation and lean the property like they were supposed to do many, many years ago and never took action? At this point, if the town did the action, then I wouldn't get flooded, the person that owns the property would have a chance to pay off the town whenever. Instead, nothing can happen the way it sits now until they get money. If they get money, it's a crapshoot. They're waiting on something they're not sure they're even gonna get. Winter's fast approaching, and it was funny, because I pleaded the fifth, last September the fifth, saying, I want help, and I supposedly got it. But, guess what? It's gone forward four inches, not any foots, not any miles of success. We're at another stand. at another standstill. So I mean, I think we need some plan of action where at a certain point the town does go on this property, remediate the problem and lean the property. If she sells it all of a sudden, there's your money back. If she gets, because whoever buys it, this is a heck of a profit this person's making if they sell it. And I'll be honest, I won't say the person's name. I don't want to make it personal. I want to make it procedural. But if the town came in and remediated, Kurt's very familiar with it now because he's had to lead their hand all the way through this. He knows what's got to be done. He's going to have to watch it one way or another. If the town did the work, Kurt could oversee it because he knows what's got to be done. The lien could be put on the property, the work would be done, my property and my septic system would be protected and so would all my neighbors and we'd have some closure. Then it would just be a financial transaction on the far end. That's what I'm suggesting. I want to be fair. Give the person a certain amount of time to determine whether or not they're going to be able to do this. I don't want to be hard, but I looked at, my wife and I wrote the original letter way back in two thousand and one and look where we are now. We're at two thousand and eighteen. At twenty twenty-one, am I going to have a twenty-year anniversary cake for you guys? I don't know. I sure hope not. So I mean, again, what's the process? How can we move forward? How can we be fair to the homeowner who bought the land dirt cheap knowing this mess was on it? So I have compassion, but went to, then to turn around and not, did she inform the town? No, I have to inform the town whenever something happens. I'm the one watching in real estate. I have to go up channel with information. It should become a down channel to me. Oh Cliff, by the way, we just found out. It's not. Nothing happens until I initiate it, which I don't mind doing because I realize our town crews and everybody are busy. But still, there's got to be a procedure where this finally gets fixed. It just can't keep, because if she turns around and sells it, then we're back at square one. So can we come up with some kind of timetable? If nothing happens by this date, at this time, what's the scope of work? How much work is there? Two, three, four days of removing film?
Moving material around.
Yeah. It's not tons of work, is it? What would you say work-wise?
What's the, what's the approximate cost?
Well, just a time. It would be man-hours.
I'd lie to you if I told you a number. I mean...
Is there any way, is there any way for you to figure out a number or should we hire another attorney, another engineer?
I can come up with a, you know, a ballpark number with, based upon a conceptual, you know...
It's removing film, right?
Basically, moving material, pushing around, I would think would be minimal off-site, but the whole of it would be putting on the high spot. You know, there's a lot you can do to give it, give it more capacity. That's what we're talking about.
And more loom, so it doesn't take residence in my yard.
We have to hire a contractor to do this or?
It's a contractor.
Okay.
So again, I mean, I'm just looking to be fair, trying to protect my interest, working with the town, and I've been more than patient. I met these people, I've given up many hours of my time.
That was my, my feeling was maybe, you know, we have to, you know, get a ballpark figure. We hire an attorney, an engineer to, to design it out and we just lean the property for that cost.
Right.
You know, I mean, we already have a judgment, so I don't think there'd be a problem leaning the property for that cost.
Right, and just, just, we need some...
Then if we get nowhere with the property owner in a little while, you know?
Mm-hmm.
Have somebody come in with some equipment and do it according to our engineer's specifications and then just lean the property for that.
That's exactly what I'm, I'm not looking to make it harder in anybody's life.
If this property's valued at two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, I'm sure we're not going to spend anywhere near that much money to get this dirt.
No, considering if you look at the sales price, and I won't go into that again, I'm trying to be sensitive to the person. The person got a very low price on it, only because our attorney never moved forward while a bank, the bank would have probably just settled and we wouldn't be doing this. But the attorney kept putting it off, putting it off, putting it off, and it got away from them. And then all of a sudden it sold. And it might get sold again.
We actually had discussed this concept last Wednesday and we, we thought that what we would do is give the property owner, since we were told that we would know about their independent financing to do this work within about four weeks, that before we took any efforts to make these types of recommendations, we would first exhaust having the individual do it themselves. Because ultimately, it is an expense to the town and a liability to the town. And if it does not resolve the issue, then is the, are the neighbors then going to be looking to the town to say, "Well, you did this work, town, and we still have these water issues?" Because I don't know if we're a hundred percent certain that this is going to resolve a hundred percent the water concerns that the gentleman is referring.
But again...
That's why, that was, why it was my feeling, if we get an engineer in there that could tell us, "Listen, you go down five feet, you're going to hit sand. Sand's going to absorb that water." And guess what? Now you got four, six feet of wood chips on there that turn into loom. And as any engineer knows, water doesn't drain through loom. It just sits on top.
Right.
Eventually, it will work its way down when it evaporates, but you know...
Until then, we're flooded.
So I mean, if...
And that's, you know, it affects me personally. I think you have to agree, I've been very patient. But believe me, I don't want to bring that cake in in September twenty twenty-one.
I think we should, you know, set a time limit.
What do they have for a time limit?
We were suggesting, we were told about four weeks, so we were going to, I was actually just kicking around with town manager to suggest maybe at your October meeting, putting this as an agenda item for discussion, then it, you would put it on. So my, my thought would be that two meetings from now, so maybe the first meeting of November, at that point, if the property owner has not advised us that they are, that they have the financing in place, and I, I believe we first started discussing this with Mr. Potter earlier in the year, I'm going to say maybe February, January, February.
It was snowing. Yeah, we had our first meeting.
So it's been, it's been a considerable amount of time and he's been very patient and a pleasure to deal with, but I guess there, there has to be a decision as to whether or not the town wants to take any direction here.
Twenty years is a long time. There are discussions about unknown, unknown items that might have been...
Oh, I can show you, but we'll go into that. No, I'll...
So that's, I was just bringing that up because you don't know once you start digging.
That's more towards the bank. That's not, that's not...
Not where we need to be.
Not where you need to be.
And I'll leave it at that.
So it can...
Because it could get ugly.
Can the house, can the property be sold tomorrow?
Yes.
And then what?
It's subject to the judgment. The judgment is, has been recorded and is a matter of title. So it runs, runs with the land.
Well, we'll see. We'll give them till, you know, October. If nothing happens, by the end of October, November, November meeting.
Trick or treat.
I'll make a motion, I don't care. I'll make a motion to hire an engineer and...
Okay. One quick question. Has the broker been made aware of the lien?
I don't know what the broker's been made aware. All I can say is it's, it's a matter of title.
You're right.
So any title searcher who runs...
But I don't think it was an easily found title last time. I remember that was part of the problem, wasn't it, Michael? They said they couldn't find it. It was kind of like not well lit up. It didn't jump out when they did a record search.
That may have been the case, but it shouldn't be the case now. I mean, it's verified that it's there.
Well, then how about a letter from your firm to the broker? It's selling the house, so anybody looking, it's going to jump out at them so we don't get sold underneath us again, for lack of an eight by twelve piece of paper.
Again, I'm happy to write a letter to anyone. It's, it is a matter of title.
Okay.
When I went to find a copy of it, I had no problem going to the clerk's office and getting a copy of it.
Okay.
It's there, it's there. Don't get nervous. It's so...
Okay, well...
So my letter, independent of, my, my letter has no independent significance when someone's relying on a title search.
Okay, okay.
But I'm happy to put anyone and everyone on notice.
Okay, because it slipped two big cracks last year and I'm patient, but...
We fill those.
Yes, thank you.
Cliff, just Cliff, one more question. Did I understand the right, you've been putting up with this for seventeen years?
Yeah. Well, I won't go into the dirt.
Yeah, no, I just...
We went to court so many times, the property would change hands before we could get to court in defense of the previous, and God bless Carol Zell. But it was trying to, it was trying to get Jello, to be honest, in court. As Nick, name would change constantly on the deed. He would cry in court. The judge would go with the tears instead of the facts. I mean, it was just a big mess. Both of the people died. The family didn't want the, I haven't got time to tell you what happened in seventeen years. I could write a Hallmark movie out of this. I should sell the rights. Thank you.
Citizen statements and petitions.
Bill Savistano, Sunnyside Drive. Reference to the police department. I still think that Smith-Petresouli proposal, the option you got, that first option is inflated. They're pushing you towards a new building. If you want to put a new building, fine, but I think the renovations, what we talked about, I mean, consensus was six months ago, whatever it was. I just think they're over inflating the renovation. I can't see what, that couldn't be done for a million and a half. Forget about the relocation. They can't pull up, we're working around the people. We can't spend a million dollars on a relocation. It's foolish. I think if you have a person in town, I mean, you drive by the police department and look pretty good. The problem is the inside. If the average person in town is going to know that you're going to put six million into a new building, why? That place looks beautiful. You know, people don't come out to these meetings. They don't pay attention. Hopefully, if you talk about, once you start really getting down to it, you own the plans, right? You spend twenty thousand for the plans? Don't you own them? So you take those plans, you have, I understand the commission's got a committee. Put some people on the committee, like Al Rosa, construction guy, Kurt here, your building department. Put some building people on there. Work with the plans you have. See what you really need. That thing is inflated. I mean, they're pushing you towards a new building. I was a salesman, that's what I would do. Thank you.
Alright, move into executive session. Motion to move into executive session.
Second.
To include...
Town manager and I think that's it. We just need the town manager.
Yep.